Good evening and welcome to the special call, May 3, 2023, meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This time I'd like to introduce the staff. We have Ashley Kreitz, Executive Director, Urban Development; Zach Pons, Director of Planning; Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. There are nine members of Planning Commission, all who were appointed by the mayor for staggered terms, with the exception of the City Council representative, who was appointed by the City Council. I ask that my two fellow commissioners introduce themselves and state their occupation, beginning with Mr. Harrison.
Tim Harrison, General Contractor.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
Bill Wright, Business Owner.
There are signup sheets outside for public comment. If you did not sign up, you will be given still an opportunity to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda. The Commission will take up items in order of the agenda. The Commission will receive a presentation from staff regarding proposed zoning text changes for the articles identified for discussion. After the staff presentation, the floor will be open for public comment. Individuals wishing to express support or opposition will be given three minutes to speak. Only the Planning and Zoning Commission can grant a specified time extension to an individual. Public comment will be received. Floor closed to public comment, and the Commission will open discussion among themselves, reserving the opportunity to vote to accept or reject any proposed changes for final consideration at the review meetings that will take place in the summer of 2023. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction. Regarding zoning text amendments, Sections 11-52-76 of the Code of Alabama State, "The legislative body of such municipality shall provide for the manner in which such regulations and restrictions and boundaries of such district shall be determined, established, and enforced from time to time, amended, supplemented, or changed, and may adopt such ordinances as may be necessary to carry into effect and make effective the provisions of this article." The Planning and Zoning Commission serves as a recommending body to the legislative body. While the zoning text amendments will be considered in pieces, they will not be enforced until the full zoning text is adopted and the zoning map changes implemented. In layman's terms, if there is a vote at any point to recommend changes, they will not be enforced on any property until the City Council adopts the zoning text and zoning map changes formally through many public hearings. At this time, we're asking, do any members of the Commission have any conflicts of interest or possible conflicts for any topics on the agenda for discussion this evening? If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, we will begin.
Good evening, Commission. As always, we are going to start with some meeting expectations. You are more than familiar with them, and those watching from home, I think you are as well, so let's just recite them together, shall we? So Steering Committee members, you are to note that role in your process. If you are speaking, please state that you were a Steering Committee member on record. Planning and Zoning Commission members, you've had time to review the draft articles ahead of the meeting. Just please make sure that if there is public comment, that you are afraid from arguing. Just listen, be respectful, ask questions if you need clarification, and look for an expedited process this evening. Of course, we will begin at 5:00 PM, ending no later than 7:00. If we don't get finished with something, this is going to roll into a next meeting. I don't believe we will have that trouble this evening, but as we continue through this process, I think we will find ourselves potentially with some longer meetings. We'll utilize a three-minute timer for public comment, visible to all parties, and staff will continue to manage the flow of the meeting for efficiency's sake. Remembering that this code rewrite is looking to maintain what works today, update what does not, making our code more user-friendly. And I think you got to see some of that in this draft this evening, with those permitted use tables, the accessory tables, the temporary use tables. We're trying to make it easier for folks to find what they need, modernizing our codes and implementing the comprehensive plan recommendations. So of course, we are dividing this task into two sections, the zoning text, and we have hit Item C on the zoning text portion, and once we are done, once the zoning text is finished, we will move into that map. There is light at the end of the tunnel, y'all. We are getting there. And we'll talk a little bit about that at the end of tonight's meeting, just as a preview. Of course, with the articles, we are in Article V, those use regulations. This is the first evening that we've gotten to talk about these use regulations specific to the different zones. And so as we get started, what you got to see in the proposed draft were five different sections for use regulations, between agricultural and residential, institutional, industrial, commercial, and accessory/temporary uses. Of course, this article is all about regulations for land uses, looking at those different types, whether they are per principal uses, conditional uses, where they're permitted, what zoning district they're permitted in, and then use-specific regulations get established as well. And you got to see, as you looked through, a dwelling-liv-work has some very specific qualities to it compared to a dwelling, single-family, potentially. You see it in a user-friendly format that got modernized by consolidating, clarifying, and reorganizing land uses within the zoning ordinance. So we got a couple of comments, and I apologize in advance. We probably could have, when we sent these out, reminded everybody about those zoning district abbreviations. These are the 30 classifications for zoning that we have gone over to date, which is wild, that we've gotten this far in it. And what you got to see within that table for your principal uses, accessory, and your temporary uses, was that we've organized it into use classifications for user-friendliness. And you see whether something is permitted or allowed by right, whether it is conditional or allowed upon the approval of a conditional use permit, whether it's a special exception use, whether it is allowed, and that's something just for planned districts only, for general planned development and riverfront planned development, and only if it's in the planned development itself. And if it is an empty box, that means it's prohibited. So pretty straightforward, pretty simple. And for our organization, and this is, the colors will not translate into the new zoning ordinance. The colors, the green and the red, were mostly just so people could see whether something was more permissive than our current zoning ordinance, our current Chapter 24, or whether it was more restrictive than our current ordinance. So across the top, of course, you see the zoning districts, the use details, whether something is permitted, conditional, and then whether there are use-specific standards associated with it.
Ashley, so does this document every change that makes any kind of impact one way or the other, with the red and green?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, like, for example, looking at this one dwelling townhouse, today, SFR IV and SFR V kind of equal out to today's RIV and RMF I, where somehow we don't allow townhouses by right, which we really probably should. We're in the downtown perimeter area. Duplexes don't get allowed in a lot of places, so that's where you see the green boxes that say it's more permissive than currently. Yeah, did it across the board. All right. So getting into the main categories, and what you see in our agricultural and our residential uses, what we really wanted to do was encourage, define, and support the different kind of housing types in the city. We carried forward a lot of things from our current ordinance, but we also, we managed to consolidate and bring forward modern standards that were to implement the goals of framework, making sure that our neighborhoods were supported, making sure that we had equal housing opportunities for anyone within the City of Tuscaloosa. We update the specific uses, aligning with land use goals, encouraging that wide variety of housing that we talk about in framework, and we have use-specific regulations for residential depending on the zoning districts, like bedroom limitations, height restrictions, and design considerations. And you got to see those at the tail end of that section. When we took this to the stakeholders, as you can imagine, everyone has been chomping at the bit for an opportunity to get to look at where are the permitted uses. And we walked through this very purposefully. If you'll recall, we talked about the zoning areas, or the zoning districts first. Then we started talking about design regulations, so you knew what landscape buffers might be required, what parking might be required. And now we're into, all right, this is your zone, this is the proposed zone, you know what it could look like, is this okay? And so we got a few comments that we do think we should probably talk about a little bit more. The idea of assisted living, or a light form of assisted living for aging populations inside neighborhoods. Basically, you look at something like three or four unrelated aged residents living in a single-family home with assistance, large bedrooms, a shared kitchen facility, shared bedroom. Could you do something like, oh, no, sorry, shared living room?
That was like fun for these.
Yes, super fun, sleepovers, all the time. But could you do this without being intrusive? And we want to talk to Clarion a little bit about it. How would you classify this? What would it look like? Because we do know, you know, as populations age, not everybody wants to go into an assisted living facility, not everyone wants to leave the neighborhood that they've been in. So is it possible to have something along those lines? I don't think it would be a group home. So we need to talk to Clarion a little bit, if it's even possible, and if it's something, you know, we might want to entertain as a special exception or by right through a planned development or something along those lines.
Do we have any of this existing in Tuscaloosa now, anywhere?
I don't think so, but other communities do have it. It's something that other places are experiencing. I think most of what we see is, you know, folks will go to the crossings, or I think that's what that new one's called, but we don't have any in, within a neighborhood. So it's something to look at, potentially. We also recognize very fully that there is a large discussion on accessory dwelling units that needs to be had. And we talked quite a bit about this during the framework, during the comprehensive plan process. Now that we've moved into the zoning text, accessory dwelling units nationally are making a comeback. And everybody in stakeholder meetings, everyone is like, yes, we love this idea, but then quietly they'll say, but not in my neighborhood, somebody else's neighborhood. So we need to figure out where accessory dwelling units can go and not be problematic if they are to be permitted by right. Right now, the only place we're permitting them by right is in MR II, which is a multifamily, or it's a residential zone for multifamily? That sounds right to me. Do we allow them as a special exception in other areas? And if so, which other areas? Because they can accomplish a lot of what we want to see in Tuscaloosa, allowing people to stay in their homes, to get a little bit more income without being problematic. And the issue that we've always had with accessory dwelling units is that our community finds and feels that accessory dwelling units are going to be for students. And what we find nationally is that that's not the case. You might just have a young professional that needs someplace to live. And then there's been a little bit of discussion about dwelling-liv-work. Basically, it is a facility that has a commercial side of it that's on the ground floor, and you live above it, but the employees are limited to occupants of the residential portion of the building. So let's say you have a restaurant, and the folks who live above it are the employees of the restaurant, and then you can have three other people that don't live there. That seemed a little hard as staff to negotiate and to, how do we, how do we manage that one? So we want to talk to Clarion about that, that it should probably, in terms of the size of the space, and not the employees. Because what if it's a 5,000-square-foot restaurant? You're not necessarily going to have just the employees living above it. Anyway, something for us to work through, certainly. And then we got some good feedback from stakeholders in the western portion of Tuscaloosa along the riverfront, some allowed uses potentially in riverfront planned developments. We agree that dwelling multifamily student should be removed from the permitted use table for riverfront, but we may need to consider adding some other types of housing, maybe adding the dwelling-liv-work, because you end up with townhouse and multifamily being the only remaining uses, no duplexes, quadplexes, et cetera. And I think within that riverfront planned development, if it's going through a review process, why not? Why not let that be something that is discussed during that public hearing? And then there were some questions from that group about maybe allowing assisted living facilities, continuing care retirement homes, and potentially nursing homes in a riverfront Moving into institutional uses, this is going to be, there's three zoning districts that mostly do institutional uses, or institutional zoning, you know what I'm saying tonight, I'm sorry, I'm tongue-tied. But we're carrying forward the uses identified within our current zoning ordinance that are institutional in nature, schools, public facilities, libraries, et cetera, continuing to update and consolidate, and making use-specific regulations for things like community services, education facilities, healthcare, and utilities. Our commercial uses continue to do the same. We have use-specific regulations for animal care, business and retail, food and beverage services, lodging, recreation/entertainment, and vehicular. We move forward into the stakeholder involvement from this. We heard from folks that they want to see ways to allow more outdoor dining by right. I think a lot of this is going to be in areas like downtown, where in zoning, it may not be the right place to do it, because the right-of-way is not controlled by zoning. But continuing to work with the Office of City Engineer and others to find ways that if we're encouraging people to activate their storefronts and encouraging people to activate their businesses, let's make it easy for them to do. In the highway commercial district, they'd like to see research and development added as a use permitted by right, along with warehousing. This would be in that heavy industrial, or heavy commercial areas that are very vehicular in nature. And then looking at allowed uses in the riverfront district, do we allow a contractor office? Do we allow a quick-service restaurant, brew pub, marina, liquor store, vehicle-mounted or tent-sheltered retail? Personally, in that list of items, the quick-service restaurant, I think, may just have been a terminology, using the definition. We don't need a fast-food restaurant by any stretch of the imagination, but a fast casual concept in the riverfront, absolutely. Brew pub, why not? Marina, why not, if it's designed correctly? Packard's liquor store, I'll leave that to the decision-makers. Our industrial uses consolidate into broad categories that align with updated use definitions. That was the biggest thing with our industrial uses generally, was just, they didn't cover nearly enough. And so we've got some minor use-specific regulations that we did, and then we added a section. So today, in the MX and the mixed residential districts, if there is a use that is not listed, the zoning officer has the ability to say, okay, this use is like this one, therefore, I'm going to treat it like this one. And it spells out provisions. The zoning ordinance that we are proposing does the same. It allows the Director of Planning to make a determination based on specific standards in how to treat something that may be unlisted in the current code, and making sure that those appropriate regulations are applied, any additional approval procedures, et cetera. So it outlines basically something we've been doing for a very long time, but just codifies it. We call out accessory uses, which is something new for us. We don't have accessory uses in our current Chapter 24, and it's always been a very interesting thing. Same standards apply. You get a little bit of additional guidance and regulation for accessory uses, and it's things like accessory dwelling units, antennas, ETMs, boat ramps, carports, et cetera. And so going through those, electrical vehicle charging stations, things of that nature. The only thing that we heard from folks in this portion was that we probably need a specific use standard for electrical vehicle charging stations, saying that in residential districts, those EV charging stations really need to be inside a carport or a garage and not just willy-nilly placed places, that they should not be in green spaces or on a street. And finally, temporary uses. And again, this is something that we just don't have today, and we're very thankful for what we're doing. You'll see within the following standards, there is a permit required, that T, and you get that upon the approval of a temporary use permit, but it's things like a special event or temporary off-street parking. Today, you know, we allow RVs to locate in the end districts if you get special approval, construction-related temporary structures, you know, anytime someone needs a job trailer, they have to come and get permission. We'll continue that, just saying, hey, listen, across the board, it's a temporary use tied with your permit. And that's what I have for you, y'all. We've had some really good, I know, for as much, for as thick as this document was, I think we all recognize it was a lot of footnotes that explained what was happening, and I could go through line by line with all of you, but I don't find that to be the best use of our time tonight. So do y'all have any questions?
Ashley, the designation of permitted versus allowed, what's the difference in those?
The allowed, the differentiation is that allowed is within your planned developments only, so it's going through that extra approval process, and so you only see the As in that very final right-hand side column.
Any other questions for staff? We have, I know we have signup sheets outside, but I don't see them. Anyone sign up outside? Okay. Let's assume there's no one signed up. At this point, we'd open it for public comment, so anyone has comments, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Joan Barnes, 5541 Woodbury Lane. I'm sorry I didn't get here in time to sign up. So I have questions more than comments, because I haven't had a chance to look through this. I did want to let you know that Tuscaloosa neighbors together, our meetings are just off-cycle from these, and so we meet next Monday. And so we'll go talk about this then and provide any comments to Ashley at that point. I did have questions as I was just perusing through it. So one of the permitted uses is home occupations, and that's allowed sort of in the residential across all of those. So what are those? We're just having trouble in our neighborhood right now with things going on that are like an automobile repair place in somebody's garage that they built in the back of their house, probably without a permit. So like, so I just haven't looked through it thoroughly. Are those going to be defined or restricted?
Yeah, they've been, home occupation has been defined within, we did definitions in March, so the March meeting materials. But home occupations are not what you just described, where people are doing vehicular repairs in their backyards. If you've got that going on, please, 3-1-1 that stuff, and we'll handle it. But it's, it's somebody who is, they're working from home. More and more people are working from home.
Yeah, we have like home kitchens, maybe.
Yes, and they're not having people come to their houses. So that's the home occupation piece.
And then people have, like, they may have a landscaping business that, in the sense, they don't really, they run the business out of their home in the sense that that's how they take, that's where their home office is, but their equipment isn't there, you know, like, that's okay, and that's allowable. But some of these other things that are kind of side jobs that people maybe are doing, and they're off-hours, we just want to make sure that those aren't there.
Yeah, we do not want to open the city up to that.
Thank you. I'm just, I'll go back to March, try to find that. The accessory dwelling, I just really hope and like you take some caution with that being allowed in the single-family residential in these areas. And again, I'm just speaking, our neighborhood right now, I don't know, like, all of a sudden it's spring, and people start doing things that are a little different. But people don't even want large accessory garages going in, right? I mean, like, because it's disrupting these aluminum, large, right now, it's a large aluminum garage, which is a special exception, it's not allowed by right. And it's particular character, we live in woodland forest of that neighborhood. So it's a neighborhood that was developed, you know, there's larger lots, we have a golf course, whoops, golf course that runs through it, and then to start adding in more people behind the house, it's just not the character of the neighborhood. When people want to do that, they add in addition to their home, right? And that's where their mother-in-law stays, or somebody else. I would be somewhat concerned about accessory buildings being used for short-term rentals, right? Currently, that's not allowed, so we'd want to keep that restriction in place. If it's intended to have people get some extra income, I mean, I don't know, right? That's just, it's just not in the character of some neighborhoods to do that, and maybe all neighborhoods. But it's just sort of thinking that through, so if it becomes like a special exception, that there are really tight rules involved, so that it's not adversely affecting the character of the neighborhood. And I'm thinking, like, parking's involved with that, where do those cars park, you know? It's all of those things. So that's all I, I just sort of had in the brief time I looked at it, but I appreciate this, and we'll look, we'll look through it. It's hard, because the parts, and how you got, like, okay, where are those definitions? And they're back in an earlier section, so it is a little hard to put it all together. But thank you so much for your time.
Well, Ms. Barth, as you continue to get through this, please, when questions come up, the planning staff is here. They're all, we're all very ready.
Right, right, I know, and it's hard, and it's, the problem is, as you know, you'll know what's wrong when a whole bunch of people show up to the meeting to complain about it. And so it's just, but you don't know, right? In some cases, until it's enacted, but I can anticipate, like, based upon my neighborhood experience, based upon TNT, which things are just, could be problematic or need better explaining so that they're more accepted. That's the direction we're moving in. Thank you.
Ms. Kreitz, on the ADU, I think there's a lot of uncertainty about that and a lot of concern. I mean, is Clarion, have they had much experience with ADU?
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, I hear what Ms. Barth is saying. I mean, there's certain neighborhoods I can see it working well in, some I can go, like, that would be a real problem. And, you know, do you base the square footage of an ADU on the lot size and the house size? And, I mean, a lot of factors that, and building material, I mean, it's about the standards, and that would be very, very stringent and tight.
Yep. Well, and that's where, you know, the ADU discussion is so good, but it's also so complicated because of points exactly like that. You don't want an accessory dwelling unit to become problematic for a neighborhood, also recognizing that the City of Tuscaloosa just needs housing, generally. And so where is the proper location for accessory dwelling units? Because I'm, I'm not sure that putting them into old, established neighborhoods is the right course of action. I can't imagine proposing that myself. I don't know that y'all would propose that necessarily, but we do need to find the correct locations for these things. Very complicated.
That's going to be a real needle to thread there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Get back to us on that when you're, when you've figured it out.
We will. Mr. Pons, do you mind clearing the timer off?
Anyone, yeah, any more comments from, anyone else in the audience care to speak about the subject matter tonight? Okay. Ms. Kreitz?
I'm going to talk to you about next steps very briefly.
Let's talk about it.
So we have, we see the light at the end of the tunnel. We initially had land use regulations planned for our June meeting as well. I don't know that we need that right now. And so what we are going to do, we are keeping this meeting, and we will get with Clarion to start piecing together that full document with all the changes. And we're going to start wrapping this precious thing up. I don't know the, right now, the July meeting, we're saying it is to be determined because we're scheduled for subdivision regulations, but I think we may adjust the timeline to finish the text up so that we can get into the map. And so that's where I am. We'll be chatting with Mayor Council, making sure they're okay with the timeline, and then bringing it back to the big planning commission for y'all to vote at your May meeting, potentially on some timeline changes.
When May?
The, the May meeting.
To vote on changes.
Yeah, to vote on changes to the timeline.
Yeah, I, I have heard some concerns that summer is not the best time to have
Correct.
items on the agenda that need a lot of, that, where there would want to be a lot of public input.
We agree. And we also know that there will need to be time for this to be tested. I see Mr. Crawford here from TTL. I'd love his group to test it. I'd love Ms. Barth's group to test it. I'd love the original city association to test this thing out and make sure that it's right. Because the worst thing that would happen is we got this thing done, we spit-shined and we polished it, and then we found out that this entire, one entire section is broken because something doesn't work. We've done too much work as a group together to allow that to happen. And so I think we will take these summer months for testing and for review, and not for, not that I believe there will be any wailing and gnashing of teeth, because this has been a very public process with a lot of opportunity
I agree, impressive.
and a lot of public input. But just to make sure it's right. And then let's look at adoption early fall. Gee, it's happening. So anyway, that's where we kind of are as always. Framework.tuscaloosa.com is your one source for all things Framework. Please review the draft articles, they are available prior to each meeting. You can submit comments, view a meeting schedule, and that is what I have for you this evening.
Any final questions for Ms. Kreitz or staff? Having heard none, meeting is adjourned.